Thank you. All right, we'll bring this Zoom meeting of the Newburgh City Planning Commission to order on this day, uh, August thirteenth, twenty twenty and get a roll call, please.
Jason Dale.
Here.
Robert Sherry.
Here.
Robert Ficker.
Here.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Sharon Capri. I can see her. She's muted. I can see her. Jeffrey Musel. Okay. And Mayor Rick Rogers. And Colin Bolick.
Here.
Okay, and we do have a quorum, I believe. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public record for for any comments that are not on the agenda tonight. I I can't see if we have anybody for that. Hearing none, we will move on to the consent calendar for the July meeting. So I have a motion on on that.
I move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the the minutes from the July. I don't have the date in front of me. The July meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Capri. I have a motion and a second. We'll get a voice vote for that one. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All against say nay. Motion passes. The meeting minutes for the July Planning Commission meeting are approved. Moving on, we have a quasi judicial public hearing. And at this point, it's, let's see, so it's related to a health hazard annexation of twenty-two fifty-five Northeast Shaillam Drive. And the matter is ANX twenty dash zero zero one. And at this time, I'd like to call for any expert take contact or objections jurisdiction. Okay, hearing none, I will move on to the statement, Commissioner or Student Commissioner Bolick. Do you have the statement to read for us?
Excuse me a moment while I retrieve it. My sincerest apologies.
No problem.
Okey dokey. ORS one nine seven point seven six three requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. Excuse me. This part of the law is also known as the quote raise it or waive it end quote requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at LUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such requests through a continuance or extension of the record.
Very well. Thank you very much. Moving it over to staff. What do you have for us?
Uh, thank you. Keith Leonard here, Associate Planner with the City of Newburgh, and tonight I will present the annexation of twenty dash zero 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 one. And this is the annexation of property located at two-two-five-five Northeast Shaillam Drive. And this is a health hazard annexation. What we have is a homeowner that came to us. Their water well is drying up. Um, so at this point, they need to have some potable water, and this is a valid reason to to request an annexation. Next slide, please. So the request is for about one acre of property, and this would be coming within to the the Newburgh city limits. And again, I it's under section fifteen dot two-five-zero dot zero-six-zero. This is a health hazard. Uh, you gotta have potable water. The property, as I stated earlier, is located at two-two-five-five Northeast Shaillam Drive. The tax lot number is four hundred. The first series of numbers there, if you didn't know, is basically the map, the assessor's map, and that tells them which one to look at. It is within the UGB or the urban growth boundary. Uh, the comprehensive plan district for this property is LDR or Low Density Residential. The current Yamhill County zoning is VLDR one. And this zoning would change to the City of Newburgh, R-one Low Density Residential. The R-one is the equivalent to the LDR Comprehensive Plan designation. Uh, the criteria uh that will be uh that we reviewed was fifteen dot two-five-zero dot zero-two-zero and fifteen dot two-five-zero dot zero-three-zero. Next slide, please. Uh, you'll see there in the red, uh, there's an arrow. Uh, there's a this kind of like an overall map. Uh, the gold line is the urban growth boundary, and the blue line is the city limits. So they're uh right outside the city limits. Next slide, please. Uh, criteria, uh, fifteen dot two-five-zero dot zero-two-zero. Uh, the site must be within the UGB or the URA, and as I noted earlier, it is within the urban growth boundary. And just across northeast Shaillam, uh, is the city limits, so they uh are immediately next to it and about it. Um, and the applicant um has has also provided uh the needed uh right of way uh that we'll be requesting. Um, so that we can eventually, when enough of the other side northeast Shaillam develops, it will have the right of way so we can have a a city or streets constructed to city standards. Uh, next slide, please. And here's an aerial photo. Um, the properties outlined there in in gold. It's just south Collin Road and just to the uh east is uh city limits there. Next slide, please. Uh, here's the comprehensive plan designation, uh, LDR across the street actually has a higher density uh comprehensive plan designation, MDR, and the MDR is equivalent to our R-two zoning district. Next slide, please. Uh, utilities. So in in terms of utilities, uh, there is water out in northeast Shaillam. Uh, there's also um uh stormwater that's that's out there, and then a little bit further away over on North Legacy Drive is where we have our closest uh wastewater line. So next slide, please. And this is the quasi judicial annexation criteria, and this fifteen dot two-five-zero dot zero through zero. Uh, the proposed use complies with a comprehensive plan designation and on the comprehensive and on the comprehensive plan map. Uh, it's a residential zone property. It's a residential use, so it is it is in compliance. Um, and then the comprehensive plan map designation, as I mentioned earlier, is LDR, and this would change to uh R-one or our low density residential zoning district, and the R-one has a minimum of five thousand square foot lots, so um, this property is is about an acre, so you probably get what about seven seven lots somewhere in there, so um, but they're not going to be developing it. Uh, this is this is for a uh lack of potable water situation. Next slide, please. Additional uh criteria, adequate level of urban services available within three years. Uh, so there is public water and stormwater lines that are located in northeast Shaillam Drive. Little bit further away is is the wastewater line and north and North Legacy Drive. Public utilities will be extended to serve the site if there is future development. The plan has not developed the property at this point. It's matter getting them potable water. Um, the water would be extended immediately so they can have their the 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 take care of this health hazard here. Uh, street improvements would be required with any future development. This is is not an immediate concern. But eventually, we would have the right way if we needed that, and then the police, fire, parks, and schools are all available to serve uh this this well, this existing home. Next slide, please. And the staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty dash three-five-seven, uh, which recommends to the City Council approve all of the requests of the annexation of one acre property located at two-two-five-five Northeast Shaillam Drive. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions uh if if needed.
Thank you, Keith. Do we have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions?
Out of curiosity, this is Commissioner Wright. If the owners wanted to put in a sewer line, would they have to do it at their own expense prior to the three years? If the city wasn't able to get a sewer line up there and they really wanted one to get it out of the field or a different kind of health hazard, did they have to pay for it on their own if it's not up there within the three years?
I I'll I'll uh ask this question to Doug. I would assume, yes, they would have to pay for that extension. I don't think it would be um something that unless the city had a project uh where it was extended.
Yes, Commissioner, this is Doug Rocks. Uh, they would have to extend the sewer line at their own cost.
Okay.
Um, and this is uh Kristen Spakarvich in here. Just as a point of clarification, also, as part of the um staff recommendation, they are being requested to sign a non-remonstrance agreement, and so as part of that, um that explains that they would be responsible for those types of improvements.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, do we have the applicant here who wants to say say something about this project?
Uh, yes, David Steenstrom. Um, Keith did a great job of of depicting what we're planning on doing. Um, we are not planning on developing. We just need water for my wife and our three kids.
Okay. Do anybody, any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Do we have any opponents here uh to this project? I'm hearing none, so I guess we'll move on to a a final word from staff and to close the public record.
So staff's recommendation um is uh that the Planning Commission adopt the Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty dash three-five-seven. And this would recommend uh to the City Council approval of the requested annexation of one acre property located at two-two-five-five Northeast Shaillam Drive.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any deliber- deliberation on this uh motion before us? This issue before us? What do we think?
I think it's a uh a good idea.
Okay. Anyone else have any other comments?
Okay, I'll just add my own little comment. Uh, I think this is a good idea and and uh I'm sorry that your well is going dry, but uh it's a good thing we're we're uh here to be able to provide provide alternative for that. So so I guess we'll call for a roll call vote at this time.
Commissioner Wright moved to adopt Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wright, for saving me. Do I have a second to the Commissioner Wright's motion?
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Now we can call for a vote.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry. Robert Sherry.
Robert. Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Robert Ficker. Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Very well. Motion passes on this ANX twenty dash zero 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 one uh constitutional hearing for a annexation. So we were moving on to COP twenty dash zero 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 two, a vacation rental located at twelve thirteen. What do we have for staff?
Uh, wait for the presentation to get up. There we go. Thank you. So uh I'd like to introduce uh the vacation rental uh review for twelve thirteen East Ninth Street. This is a conditional use permit, uh, COP twenty dash zero 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 two. I'd like to enter in my staff report and all exhibits and attachments into the public record.
Okay.
Next slide, oops. Uh, so the the property owner, oh, I gotta gotta shrink down my camera here. It's blocking blocking my slides. There we go. So the applicant is Jeffrey and Diane Wright. Um, they they live in Washington, but they have um some children that go to school in the area, a college, and they're down here frequently, so uh, when they're not down here, what they've wanted to do is to be able to rent out the home. Um, but uh it sounds to me that they're here quite frequently. So the request is for a conditional use approval, uh, to use an existing two-bedroom, single-family dwelling as a vacation rental. As I mentioned, it's located twelve thirteen East Ninth Street. Uh, the tax lot is sixty-six hundred. The zoning is R-two or medium density within uh this area, and the applicable criteria is the conditional use permit criteria, and that's located in section fifteen dot two-two-five dot zero-six-zero. And then we also have some special use criteria, uh, and that's located in fifteen dot four-four-five dot three zero zero. These are criteria that specifically uh apply to uh vacation rentals. Next slide, please. And here's the property. Uh, it's outlined in yellow there. Uh, across the street, you'll notice that uh that is the Ninth Street Grocery Store there. It's uh to the uh west, you have South Shaillam Street, and to the east, you have South Willamette Street. Next slide, please. Uh, here's the zoning map. The gold area is the R-two, and just across the street, we do have some commercial. This is neighborhood commercial uh is on property, and um that's why you have a convenience store and also the surrounding properties have had to carry that same zoning. Next slide, please. Here's the street view of the property. It's a nice looking house. It's well well landscaped. Um, you'll notice that they do have uh two, at least two parking spaces on this driveway, which is also a requirement that I'll get to. Next slide, please. So the conditional use uh criteria, um, it it review, we look at location size, uh, the surrounding character, neighborhood, um, and and try to assess whether this is appropriate uh location for this sort of use. So the location is just south downtown, and it's crossed from uh Ninth Street Grocery. Uh, it's an existing house, and this is one of the requirements, has to be a single-family home. Um, and it's similar to the surrounding land uses, uh, residential in uh most of the areas except for the uh grocery that's just to the south. And um they are going to be providing the two off-street parking spaces uh onsite. Next slide, please. Additional criteria, um, so the location is attractive for a vacation rental. It's uh just south downtown. Uh, it is uh within walking distance. Um, and we have plenty of regional attractions that that make uh the use of homes for vacation rental. Seems to be almost popular these days, so um the parking, uh, there are two existing parking spaces, as I mentioned, and uh this is again a compatible use with the surrounding uh area. Next slide, please. And this this is the vacation rental uh criteria. Um, so the vacation rental, it must be a single-family dwelling. It's located at twelve thirteen East Ninth Street. Um, they will have to register for uh the transient lodging tax and pay that uh when they rent it. Uh, then the standards, they have to provide two off-street parking spaces, and those will be part uh provided on the driveway. It's a two-bedroom home. Uh, the way our code is written, that allows for two guests in each bedroom, so they could have up to four guests. And then we do not allow uh the premises to include RVs, tents, and other temporary shelters for people to stay in. Uh, and then they also have to post information. Um, just like any hotel, uh, when you uh come to the door, you find uh information posted. In this case, they have to have the contact information for the owner, the police, um, the um other standards, how many people can can uh be in the rooms and that sort of thing. Garbage pickup day has to be posted, and and in this case, in this area, it's Wednesday. And as I mentioned, this information must be posted next to the front door. Uh, next slide, please. So the staff recommendation is to move to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty twenty dash oh-three uh with the conditions, and the conditions are basically that they do the posting, and uh they have regular trash refuse. These are all the the conditions we have listed in the uh special use criteria for vacation rentals. And um so this would be to approve the conditional use permit twenty, yeah, COP twenty dash zero 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 two. A vacation rental located at twelve thirteen East Ninth, and the tax hot lot number is sixty-six hundred. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. Um, on page seventy-two of the report. Um, item fifteen four-four-five-three-thirty, item C. There there's a it says up to a maximum of fifteen people. I I don't quite understand that.
I think that was a typo.
Keith, you're you're muted.
I believe our code uh allows that maximum, but in this case, it's limited to bedrooms, so they have two bedrooms. They can have two guests per bedroom.
So the the that should be struck, the the fifteen people?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Keith. Do we have the proponent here today?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Carl Hallson. I'm the agent for the property owners, Mike and Cindy Paul, and uh uh thank you for having me to your hearing. Just a couple of corrections, or at least one correction, that Mike and Cindy uh closed on the property on May twenty-eighth of this year, and the staff report lists the owner as Jeff and Diane Wright, and that's that's that was the case when we made the application initially, but not now, and I think Keith shaking his head, so, yep. And then uh, other than that, we have no problems with the conditions of approval, especially if you get the typo corrected. I don't think we want to try to squeeze fifteen people into this two-bedroom house. I don't think Mike or Cindy would want that either. And other than that, we have no trouble with the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Is it Hanson?
Hallson.
Hallson, sorry. Okay, hearing none. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, do we have any opponents here today for this for this project? Okay, hearing none. I will go ahead and uh close the public record at this time and turn it back over to staff.
Uh, so as I I mentioned earlier, uh, staff does recommend approval of uh Planning Mission uh order twenty twenty dash oh-three uh with conditions. Um, and this would approve the conditional use permit uh COP twenty dash zero 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 two, and it would provide the availability for this property to be used as a uh vacation rental, and um they'll have to pay the transient lot or register for the transient lodging tax and all the other stuff, so.
Yeah, and and we'll be sure to do those corrections, right?
One point of clarification, Mr. Chair. I don't think you read the legal language into the record.
I gotta do it twice. That's correct. Very well, uh, we will do that at this time. Just just to see, make sure that we did. So uh before we do that, we'll make sure that we call also called for uh bias and ex parte contact. And before we render a decision. Hearing none, Commissioner Bullock, can you read the statement again for us, please?
Yes, sir. ORS one nine seven point seven-six-three requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as the quote raise it or waive it end quote requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at LUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow a local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such requests through a continuance or extension of the record.
Okay, thank you. Better late than never.
Uh, so Mr. Chair, let me do this for some protocol issues. Uh, let me put into the record the fact that the staff report that Keith Leonard presented uh is in the record, the comments of Commissioner Sherry about striking the fifteen, the comments by Mr. Uh, Hason about agreeing with that, and clarification who the ownership are all in the record, and conclude with, does anybody have any objections to any of that information that was presented into the record?
Very well. Do we have any objections to any of that information that was presented since the record at this time? Hearing none, I think we're good to go on that unless you want another correction, Mr. Rocks.
No, Mr. Chair, I'm good. I think we've covered it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now we are free to deliberate on this issue before us. What do we think?
So PC Commissioner, uh, Wright, I think it's actually a very good idea. They obviously qualify living at a state. Um, but it's nice for kids going to school here, not only to have their parents locally, but when you have your kids in school to have a rental and a form of income on top of it, plus a backup place in an emergency if the anything happened to your kids, I think it's a wonderful use of this property.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or concerns? Okay, do we have a motion in front of us regarding this?
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve COP twenty dash zero zero two.
Sorry. Commissioner Wright, uh, second for.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let's get a roll call vote, please.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Robert Ficker.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. CP 20-0002 is on to the City Council for approval. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have...
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, that was, the commission was the final decision maker unless it's appealed.
Oh, excuse me very much. A lot of them go to the City Council, so my mistake.
The annexation goes to the City Council, but not the CUP.
Correct, okay. Moving on to items from staff. We have an economic opportunity and opportunities analysis of the buildable lands inventory and employment land need analysis. Doug.
All right, so Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So we've been giving you a series of briefings on the EOA process as we move through each particular task. So tonight, I'm gonna kind of, I'm gonna run through some adjustments we made to the buildable lands inventory. And then I'm gonna get into the employment land needs. So, next slide, please. We don't need to do the introductions. Next slide, please. Next, oh, so here's the map. And so we made a few adjustments to this particular map. Up at the, your upper right-hand corner where it's green, we have the employment. And so we ended up actually taking the property that's owned by the Ostas, it's in the darker green, and identified that later on in the document as actual industrial land. Just to make it, some clarifications for that. We also, the hospital site, which is kind of the turquoise color, questions came up through the committee. If there was some expansion land that was available, there is approximately eight acres on the hospital campus. And that would be on the south side of the existing hospital. We made a little correction down in the riverfront area to make sure that what is represented here is in alignment with the riverfront plan overall. So the adjustments were really minor in nature. But we wanted to make sure that we were capturing the comments that we were getting from the committee.
Next slide, please.
So with all of that, then it brings us to the numbers. So what it tells us is that we have a total buildable acres of commercial of 55 acres. 27 of those are on vacant lots and 28 are on partially vacant lots. In the mixed-use category, which includes the riverfront and some specific plans in the Springbrook District Village, we have a total of 24 acres. 21 of those are vacant and four of those are partially vacant. On the industrial, we have a total of 51 acres. 41 of those acres are vacant and 10 acres are partially vacant. And one of the things we did on the Springbrook District Village is that's a, it's a mixed-use area. So there's residential and commercial. So I, the consultants went back to the Springbrook master plan and looked at the number of units, the square footage and so forth, the commercial that was supposed to or anticipated to be developed, translated that into acres so that we were actually capturing that material correctly and that we weren't overcounting numbers between the housing needs analysis and the economic opportunities analysis. Next. So these two tables start to break it down a little bit further. So for commercial, you can see the category of less than .5 acres. When we've got three tax lots, .5 to 1 acres, we've got three. 1 to 2 acres, we got seven. 2 to 5 acres, we got 13 lots. And 5 to 10 acres, we got eight. And then 10 to 25, we have 21. So that's kind of how you read the table. So what it comes up with is we have a total of 130 lots for commercial, mixed-use, and industrial. Then we go to lots that are buildable vacant, partially vacant by land's size. And again, you can read through the table and you can see the breakdown by each of the various categories. Next. Okay, one more, Sue. So we talked with the committee and I brought this up with you at your last meeting briefly. And so we need to go back and we need to look at our employment base, our growth rates, what our mix of employment is. We need to capture the employment that's in the residential areas. And then we translate that to an employment density number. Next slide, please. So we estimate that in 2018, the total employment in Newburgh was 13,466 jobs. We decreased that number by 10% given the COVID-19 pandemic. We double-checked that with the employment department and they thought that that number was acceptable and reasonable. Right now, unemployment's running in Yam Hill County at about 9.7%, so very close to 10. Then we looked at the growth rates. And so the community grew by 837 jobs, which translates to a .9 average annual growth rate between 2008 and 2018, so a 10-year period. So then we go a little bit deeper, and I've mentioned this before, we have safe harbors that are in the administrative rule. One deals with the employment department number, which is 1.13, or the updated PSU population growth rate, which was, came out and finalized at the end of June. When you saw this last time, that number was like 1.73. And that number has gone down. We anticipated that it would. It's gone down to 1.39%. So in the table itself, you can look at and compare population growth rate versus employment growth rate. The committee is looking at utilizing and all of the material that will follow is the PSU population growth rate. So you can see with a 1.39 is that in 2021, we've got, taken the discount, we got 12,119 jobs. In 2041, it's projected to be 15,963. So that's a change of 3,844, which is a 32% growth, which is that annual growth rate of 1.39%. So the rest of this presentation is gonna talk based off of that 1.39. Next, please. So we looked at the 2021 numbers of employment. So like in industrial, we had 3,030 jobs, which is 25%. Retail was a little over 1,311%. Office was a little less, and commercial a little less than 7,000, 57%. And government was about 7%. Looking forward, and some of this is aspirational, and the committee talked extensively about this, and is to create more family wage jobs in the industrial side. So that means in 2041, we're looking at 35% of the employment being in industrial. And historically, we were at 35%. I'll show you a graphic in a little bit. Retail, we're projecting that's gonna go down to 9%. Office is gonna go down to 50%. And government will go down to 6%. We put in here companies that have moved out. And part of the issue is they've not been able to find building or land. So Polymax, Northwest Alpine, Halsted, Advanced Machinery, Aviatrix, and of course, the closed mill site. Next slide, please. So then we break that down a little bit further into the commercial sector. And think about that, though we may say the growth in retail will only be 104, depending on market conditions that could happen, you could see a little bit more in the retail side and a little less in the office and commercial services. But so kind of think of it as a whole of 1,178. But right now, where we're at in the analysis, that's the subset breakdown. So we're able then to translate that into employees in residential designations and then new appointment on vacant land. Next slide, please. So our current employment densities in our retail commercial is 16 employees per acre. Our office is 22 employees per acre. And that's typical, you know, you can get a two-story building, so you get a little bit more density of employees per square foot. In the analysis, we, the consultants went through and analyzed and took out in our commercial areas right away. And so that came up to 19%. Next slide. So then we move to the future employment land needs, so at this 1.39%. So we're looking at new employment for retail on vacant land with a number of 88. So at 16 employees per acre, that translates to a land demand of six acres on the net or seven acres on the gross. And then you go through a similar mathematical calculation on the office and commercial. So that one's 905, 22 employees per acre. The net acreage is 42, the gross acreage is 59. Next slide. So the land sufficiency, so what, all of that math leads to is it tells us that we have a surplus of 20 acres of commercial land over the next 20 years. Next slide. And so now we're down to talking about Target Industries. And we talked a little bit about this at the, at a prior meeting. And so we started with the 2016 and then updated 2019 Economic Development Strategies, where we actually had more categories. But as we talked through it all, we collapsed some of the categories. And so we ended up with five. And so we collapsed advanced and general manufacturing into one category. And since we have a cluster of dental and medical equipment, we have machine shops and we have some smaller storage, logistics, and distribution. We took technology and collapsed that into tech and high-tech manufacturing. So and you can see the list, electronics, semiconductors, health, medical information. We did a similar process with food and beverage and agriculture and collapsed those into one category. So farming, value-added food manufacturing, forestry, wood products stayed the same. And then aviation-related industries, which is a special subset, which I'll talk a little bit about further on in the presentation. But the aviation piece plays off of Sportsman's Air Park. Next slide, please. So this is an LQ, otherwise known as a location quotient diagram. And so what this tells us is that if you have an LQ of greater than one, is that you're strong in that area. That means those kinds of businesses are locating in your community. If you have a location quotient less than one, is, we're not as strong. Keep it simple. So you can see that accommodation and food services are, is strong in Newburgh. Healthcare and social assistance is strong. Manufacturing is strong. It's strong but declining. And that kind of relates back to when I talked about, we were at 35% in our industrial and we're now at 25%, but we want to move back to the 35%. If you look at the top-left quadrant, those are industry sectors where it's weak in Newburgh, but it's growing. And you can see a wide variety of natural resources, wholesale trade, information, professional technical services, real estate, finance, insurance. We also, the retail trade is moving over towards the top right slightly, as well as construction. Interesting enough is we don't have any industry sectors that are in the weak and declining category. Next slide, please. You've seen this, and I gave it to you in a packet in a prior meeting. And so this is from the Infrastructure Finance Authority from Business Oregon. And it lays out all the site characteristics for different types of industry sectors. So it gets down to acreage, minimum slope, it gets down to utilities. It talks about dependency on other utilities, power, natural gas, talks about rail service or not. This is a big 11 by 17 chart, so it never works well in a PowerPoint presentation. But we use this information as part of our site characteristics, looking at our target industries that we've identified. Next slide, please. I'm moving my big screen. Okay. So back up here. So we took that Infrastructure Finance Authority diagram, and that's on the top. And then we put our industry sector categories along the left-hand side and started to align them to see how they fit in with the IFA diagram. And so everywhere you see a check is where there were alignments between our sectors and the identified state sectors. Next slide. And then we pulled off of the IFA form some key site characteristics to each of these sectors. So you can see in general advanced manufacturing, they're looking for site sizes from 5 to 25 acres with a 0 to 7% slope, preferred to have rail within 20 minutes of highway access, that's miles to an interstate, and then the types of special utilities. And so you can go through each row and see what those particular needs are. When you get out to the aviation-related side, you know, railroad access is maybe. Really, the access to an interstate is not as important. But if you're forestry and wood products, miles to an interstate is important. You know, they want to be 5 to 20. And of course, we're, we're within 20 miles of an interstate because our south industrial area is 12 miles to an interstate. Most people don't know that, but if you go down 219, take McKay Road, go out to the Donald Aurora Interchange, it's 12 miles. Some of the high-tech, you can see they have some more unique characteristics, high-pressure water dependency, very high utility demands. Next slide, please. And next. So the committee then talked about growth. And with a growth of 2,557 employees in our industrial sector and that we generally need sites that are in the 5 to 25 acres, that's what the data is telling us. But we're also gonna need some larger sites and we're gonna need some smaller sites. So, next slide. So what the consultant did is they went out and looked at a variety of communities in the Willamette Valley and in the southwest portion of the Portland metro area. So we looked at Albany, Corvallis, McMinnville, Sherwood, Wilsonville, Newburgh, Salem, and Woodburn. Also, Tuolleton wasn't in the slide, but they also looked at Tuolleton. And they had data on that, or they were able to access confidential data through the employment department. QEC data. And so then they separated out these different sectors and site sizes into categories of smaller than 5, 5 to 25, 25 to 50, and 50-plus acres. Next slide. And then they graphed that. So you can see, if you start on the left-hand side, Albany has a number of sites that are less than 5 acres. And most of their employment is on those sites that are less than 5 acres. They have a, one, they have a small amount of acreage in the 5 to 25 and a very small amount in the 25 to 50. If you went over to the far-right-hand side, you can see Woodburn is pretty diverse. They've got some less-than-5-acre sites, 5 to 25, 25 to 50, and 50-plus acre sites. You look at Sherwood, they're not as diverse in their parcel sizes. And then you can see McMinnville next to Sherwood. We also looked at Salem, because then we know they have some large lot sites. But interestingly enough, Salem has a lot of sites that are less than 5 acres in size where three-quarters of their employment is actually located. And then they have some in the 5 to 25, and then they've got some stuff out on the east side of Salem, out at Mill Creek, that are 50 acres and larger. And then you kind of see the one that's in the middle. And that's Tuolleton, which has a lot of less-than-5-acre sites, but then they've got... And that's Tuolleton, which has a lot of less than five-acre sites, but then they've got quite a few. They're kind of split fifty-fifty with sites that are twenty-five, five to twenty-five acres. And then you can see Newburgh, where we're kind of comparable with Sherwood, with not a lot of less than five-acre sites. Where again, we're about fifty-fifty and then we've got some five to twenty-five. Next slide. And so this is a different graph, looking at total acres against the acreage size. And you can see Corvallis has a lot that's in the fifty-acre plus, and that's, we believe, is due to Tektronix. If you look at Woodburn, that's some of the new stuff they brought into their urban growth boundary down by the Winco distribution facility on the west side of I-5. You can see Salem again in their distribution. And you see the big purple that is shown for Newburgh, and that actually is the mill site. So we do have, you know, a hundred-plus acre site. And then we've got some stuff with A-deck as well, up on the north end of town. So this is a way to look at site size by number of employees and site size by total number of acres between these two slides. Next. So then we start to break that down. And so the percent of existing employment, so less than five acres out of all of that group, fifty-one percent or five to twenty-five is forty-one percent, twenty-five to fifty is four percent, and fifty or more is four percent. And then you can look at the number of acres per site. So less than five is fifteen, fifteen to twenty-five is a hundred and thirty-three, twenty-five to fifty is a hundred and twenty-eight, fifty or more is two oh three. And then they put together, says, what's the average site size, given that whole data set that's there? And so the average site size for something that's less than five acres is actually one acre in size. In the five to twenty-five range, it's about ten acres. In the twenty-five to fifty acre range, it's about thirty-three acres. And for the fifty acre or more, it's a little over ninety acres for those average site sizes. Next. So then we take this two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven new industrial employees and then we equate that back again, more tables, more math. So we're looking at forty-six percent of our employment growth would be on sites less than five acres. Forty-one percent on five to twenty-five, five percent in the twenty-five to fifty, eight percent in the fifty or more. And so then we start to figure out, well, how many sites do we need? So if we have fifteen employees per site for something less than five acres, that means we need seventy-nine sites are needed in Newburgh. And then you can do the math as you move across. And then we have the new land need. And so those acres translate, based upon the average site size from that data set, is we need seventy-one acres of land that are in that less than five acre category, seventy-nine in the five to twenty-five, twenty-five to fifty would be thirty-three, fifty or more, ninety-two acres. So that gets you into a number of two seventy-five. Next slide. So then we have to do some deductions from all of this. And what this slide really tells us, and it explains it in the narrative above, but if you go to the less than five acres, what it tells us is we have a net need of fifty-one acres of land for sites that are less than five acres in size. Sixty-nine in the five to twenty-five, thirty-three in the twenty-five to fifty, ninety-two in the fifty or more. So the key number is at the bottom right, is telling us we need two hundred and forty-six acres of industrial land. That's above what we have today, the forty acres. Next slide. And the next one. So earlier on, I said, we've got a surplus of twenty acres of commercial land, but we don't have enough industrial land. And so the next step that the committee's going to be going through is discussing strategies and policies related to the industrial land component. We won't be talking about the commercial anymore. And I've already had a meeting with our consultant team to talk about policies. And we've started to establish some framework that we'll be taking back to our Citizens Committee in October. So in October, uh, the Citizens Committee will be seeing a first draft of the EOA document. And we're going to be talking about the strategies and policies to accommodate growth. The consultants have a number of tasks to do over the next forty-five days of trying to gather all that information up and get that draft of that report put together. I know that was quick. There's a lot of information, but that's where we're at in the process. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
On Commissioner Wright, on the acreage that we're needing for industrial, the acreage that you cited prior to expanding the urban growth boundary, were any of those sites potential industrial areas?
Yes, the forty acres that I noted at the beginning of the presentation is for industrial.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, it looks good.
So one of the things to think about, so I, I mentioned that our deficit of industrial land, based on the twenty years, based upon this methodology, based upon the data set, is two hundred and forty-six. As we talk about policies, we're going to have to throw the mill site into that particular mix. So if the mill site was to redevelop, and let's just take, it's a hundred acres, it's not the exact right. We may only need, part of our industrial land need would be that the mill site is currently developed. But if it redevelops, it could meet some of these parcel sizes that we're talking about. That could be then be a deduction off of that two forty-six. So it may, and it may, don't have a final conclusion, that we may only need to look at an expansion of our urban growth boundary for roughly a hundred and fifty acres. We'll know more as we get through October and are moving into November about what the final numbers are going to look like. Other questions?
Is this moving towards, uh, applying for new UBG increases in the future?
Yeah.
Possible ammunition, maybe?
Well, I wouldn't call it ammunition. So there are two foundational pieces that you need to do in urban growth boundary expansion. First one is your housing needs analysis. And so we did one, we finished that in June, council accepted it in August of 2019. We got a grant, we're going back and updating the buildable lands inventory and the population numbers in that housing needs analysis, so that they align with the population numbers in the economic opportunities analysis. Both those documents will look at a twenty-year horizon from 2021 to 2041. This EOA work will be completed in February. The HNA work will be completed in about February as well. And in my schedule is that I would be going to the city council in probably April-ish timeframe and asking them, do you want staff to initiate an urban growth boundary expansion process? So we already know we're a hundred and eight acres shy. We are deficient in our residential land and our preliminary numbers are telling us we're two forty-six in our industrial. If the council says yes, we want to initiate that. My likely next step would be to do a comp plan amendment, to take this EOA data and put it in the comp plan and go through the process with DLCD and LCDC and see if the EOA would get appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
Okay. So, so middle of next year, the earliest, looks, sounds like?
At the very, very earliest.
Yeah. Okay. Well, progress is progress, I guess.
Step at a time.
Yep. Any other questions? Or I don't mean to hog the floor. Okay. What do, what do we have next?
We have your forward-looking calendar. And I can say that your forward-looking calendar is already incorrect, because I did this and then a lot of other things have come up. You are going to have a very busy fall into winter. With, with all of these, you know, with our typical land use applications that come in. But I'm also going to be adding a bunch of other stuff. So we're doing the implementation of the Riverfront Master Plan. So we're going to be doing comp plan, comp map, development code changes. We're going to be doing annexations for that. Engineering is working on updating our functional plants, transportation, sewer, water, and stormwater. Those are all going to be coming to you between now and basically January kind of timeframe. In addition to that, I'm going to be giving you briefings on the status of the EOA, of our update to the housing needs analysis, updates on our public semi-public land analysis. We also have another grant that we're going to get ready to kick off towards the end of this month for doing middle housing code revisions. That's for duplexes, triplexes, quads, cluster housing, and townhomes. There are going to be, you'll see in your neck, next packet, there are going to be a number of days that you're going to be doing joint work sessions with the city council on the city council nights. And those are going to occur in November and March and June. So I've actually got to schedule this build out for you guys all the way out to June of 2021. You're going to have a really busy night on December tenth.
Okay.
All right, now I've got five items that need to be brought before you on the tenth. Only one of those is a hearings, others, two of them will be recommendations and the others will be briefings. Your November meeting, you're going to have one, two, three, four. And your November meeting, you're going to have five items on your agenda.
If you give me a speed challenge, I can handle it, I think.
Yeah. In January, you're going to have one, two, three, four, five. In January, you're going to have five items on your agenda. January is going to be a hearing month. That's where we're going to be looking at water, wastewater, stormwater. So get ready. I'm coming at you with a lot of stuff.
Lot of reading.
Lot of reading.
Everybody get ready. At least, at least we're not getting inundated with dead trees anymore.
This will all be outlined in your next packet, so it'll be something to pay attention to looking forward. Really, it's really starts to ramp up in, in November, November, December, and January.
Okay. All right, I believe all that's left is items from commissioners then.
Well, Commissioner Wright, I wanted to thank Doug and his staff for using strictly Newburgh within the city boundaries of potential, you know, job numbers rather than all Yam Hill County. Wonderful. Applaud you guys. Awesome. Just awesome graphs and everything. They really give a lot of information. Really appreciate your input and work in that.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Okay, not hearing anything, so we will adjourn for the night. Thank you all for your attention and your attendance. See you next month.
Good night to everybody.